Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 5:30 PM on Monday, June 1, 2020, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. So we'll call this meeting to order. Councilmember John Scott is going to give us an invocation and remain standing, and we'll do the pledges of allegiance right after.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to gather, to gather in this wonderful community that you created, that you've given to us. I pray, Father, that during this meeting that you watch over the leadership of this community, that you watch over the citizens of this community, and that you guard us from harm. I pray, Father, that during this meeting that it be your words and your guidance that lead us along the way. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
No internet. I have one, you can have that if you want. Okay, moving on. Communications from the public. Thanks for filling out this card, Don. That means I got to read this four-page narrative. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. Don Johnson.
Don, I'm the timekeeper, so I'll give you a two-minute warning, and then when your time is up.
Okay, it won't be more than 10 minutes, I'm sure.
We'll shoot you before it's five.
I haven't seen everybody in a while, and it's great to see everybody. Thank you much for letting me speak. Today, I just really wanted to come and thank the mayor and council and staff for pushing forward with a project to resurface the streets in our neighborhood. It's probably been 40 years that we've been bouncing down those streets, and, you know, it's just great now to have some smooth streets to drive back and forth to. And I want to thank Mo and everybody because we had a lot of questions, of course. It's kind of a new thing for us. It took a little while, but I think that was because of one of the pipeline companies getting some kind of, you know, permissions to do over there. So the city was great, we loved the streets, and I just want to say thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Don, appreciate it. Okay, city manager's report? No, I'm sorry. I turned my page, I turned my page, and there I was, looking at communications from the public. That's after the next communications from the public. Giddy up. Work session, okay, item five, work session. First, we'll talk about the multi-year financial plan. I should have known Katina, Rhonda, everybody from Administrative Services is in here hanging out, so I should have been aware that we were going to talk budget.
A little bit. It's the precursor for budget.
Precursor to budget, I'm sorry.
Precursor for budget. Good evening, mayor and council. We're here to discuss the city's multi-year financial plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. The goals of today's work session are to give an overview of the multi-year financial plan, keeping in mind that our focus here is on general fund and tax debt service funds only. Our utility funds, our utility fund and special revenue funds are analyzed separately during the budget development process. Today, we'll also look at some critical assumptions or key assumptions and planning factors that we incorporate into the multi-year financial plan. We will also, through this work session, hopefully engage council and get some dialogue from you all for input on how to maintain the city's current service levels. The scope of detail included in the multi-year financial plan, we look at revenue and expenditure projections for the next five years. We also look at the decision packages that are submitted by the departments as needs for the five-year planning window. Year one of the plan is the basis for our upcoming budget year. So we also take a look at our fund balance projections and apply those key planning assumptions to see that our 90-day fund balance reserve is maintained or how far it's maintained in the plan. Looking at our key planning assumptions, we're looking at our revenues. First of all, our property taxes make up the majority of the city's revenue, so we definitely take a look at those. We look at the property values that are factored into the multi-year financial plan. Looking at this first, or this five-year window, we've estimated about a 5% growth in the tax base residential and commercial for the first year of the plan, and then about 2% for years two through five in the plan based on where we're seeing our population growth. The other revenue sources in the plan are usually, we usually anticipate those or project those based on population growth. Those are like our sales tax revenues, which actually in this next year, we're expecting about a 5% growth in our sales tax, sales tax revenue just based on the trends that we're seeing this year. And then those other revenue sources, such as franchise taxes, our court fines and fees, those, we are anticipating those to be about 2% year-over-year in the plan.
So even with the businesses that were shut down, you still think it was a 5% sales tax?
At this point, we are, there's, of course, a lag, a two-month lag in our collections and what's remitted to us, but what we are seeing so far, we're estimating that this year will be about 5% over our budget for last, for this year.
The last report showed a 10% growth over this time last year, surprisingly. So that's not necessarily, that doesn't necessarily mean that all businesses are thriving during this time, but some are greater than we anticipated.
Katina, you said 5% growth over what we budgeted. What did we budget last year?
For sales tax.
Uh-huh.
Total sales tax revenue, about 8 million. And that's general fund, that goes to general fund as well as the street maintenance and economic development. So total about 8 million. And I should have said this at the beginning. If you have questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. So moving on to our revenue planning data. In the multi-year financial plan, we look at residential growth. We also look at our commercial growth in our tax base. Community Development has worked with us, thank you, Aubrey, on giving us our projections for our new home starts in the plan. We've included about 125 new homes for the first three years of the plan, 125 homes per year, and then in the last two years, about 100 homes. And that's just based on what we're seeing right now in our residential development. The values or the change in values of those new homes, we're anticipating about a 3% annual increase in the value of new homes, going from about $429,000 to about $484,000 by year five of the plan. So our planning assumptions also look at new commercial values that we're expecting to be added to the tax rolls. And for the upcoming fiscal year, we are anticipating about 10, about $29.4 million in commercial to be added to the tax roll for this year. And then in 2022, about another 10 million, and then another 8 million in 2024. So those values we're anticipating being added to the tax rolls from the commercial tax base. We are anticipating throughout the plan that our tax base will remain at about that 80-20% split, or 80-20 split between residential and commercial. And we're expecting that to be maintained throughout the five-year window. Our other planning assumptions, we look at fee adjustments that may need to be made, new fees that can be added. The multi-year financial plan is set up such that we can look at alternative revenue options. The last time we used this tool in the plan was for our Fire EMS billing, to see what that impact and what revenue we would gain from that. Looking at our general fund revenue, this is a new term that you'll see, the no-new revenue tax rate. This is as a result of the Senate Bill 2. We'll discuss that a little bit further in the plan. So looking at our general fund revenues, we're anticipating about $29.5 million in revenue to our general fund, not just from property taxes, but from all revenue sources. About 84% of our general fund revenue is from taxes. About 50, about 53% of that is property taxes. Then another 24% of our general fund revenue is from sales taxes, and another 7% from franchise taxes, which are, come from utilities that operate within the city, electricity, natural gas, phone and cable franchises. Our non-tax revenue is about 16%, and this is made up from our service charges for parks and rec fees, municipal court fees, some intergovernmental or grant funds that we get on a regular basis, some of our inter-local agreements with other governmental agencies, such as the school districts, and some inter-fund transfers between our other funds into the general fund for operations.
Question here. So the no-new tax, the no-new revenue tax rate is the, whatever tax rate it would be to take in exactly what we're taking in now?
The effective tax rate.
Yeah, the effective tax rate, okay. And where is debt service in that?
Debt service is in the new, in the new, no-new revenue. That's a tough one to say multiple times. We always look at our debt service obligation first. And so that, in that rate, the debt service, it's still the two components, the maintenance and operations rate, and then the debt service rate would be included in that.
So when we calculate the effective tax rate, do you get to take out what the voters have already approved for the bond, what we need to pay? So if it's a penny or two pennies, whatever it is, that goes aside, and then you calculate the effective tax rate?
We look at our, our total debt service obligations for general fund. So it's all of our outstanding debt, and then the rest goes to...
The effective tax rate, okay.
So to clarify, when you calculate the effective tax rate or what's now referred to as a no-new revenue tax rate, debt is not excluded from the equation. So the figure you have on the screen before you, the 15.59 million, represents our operations and maintenance portion of the property taxes. Our debt service this current year is about 3.2 million. When you're calculating the no-new revenue tax rate, it's the amount, the tax rate for, to generate the same roughly $19 million worth of revenue. So the debt is not taken out of the equation. So it does impact you on the calculation of what used to be the effective tax rate, which is now the no-new revenue rate. It does not count against you on what was previously known as the rollback tax rate or the voter-approved tax rate now.
So if I'm understanding that, I'm just going to throw out this number.
Sure.
So if three cents was needed to pay the debt, it was only two cents last year, that one penny comes out if we adopted the same, an effective tax rate or the no-new tax rate, that one penny comes out of maintenance and operation, what we had available for maintenance and operation last year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's interesting, okay. That's different for the school district.
And we also, within the city, we have the sales tax relief on property tax, so that also is a factor because we have adopted that sales tax to create property tax relief. So that's factored in as well.
Katina, do you feel pretty comfortable with those projections on looking at this exact time period back to 2019? At this exact time period, our permits and fees has dropped from about $43,000. And our fines and forfeitures has dropped to about $42,000. But as Mo mentioned earlier, the sales and alcohol tax has, is up just comparing last year to this year, so that's really good. But on our possible build-out on these new homes and the permits and fees and our property taxes, do you feel comfortable with the 2% to 5%?
We do, and it's because as we're going through our revenue projections, we base those on what our actual is for this year, what we're seeing our actual.
So if I'm looking at this year and I'm then looking back into, into April, May, June, and July, I know, I know you mentioned it lags sometimes 60 to 90 days, which we'll probably see for May and June. If we start seeing those falling short, like the $43,000, y'all are ready to, to, to take a hard look at that?
We always do, you know, like on a monthly basis, we're looking at our revenue projections compared to actual and making those adjustments as needed.
Well, all, all in all, just looking at where we were at this year and where we were at last year, it really looks good. And, and, and y'all are doing really good. I noticed that, that Mo's administration side of it, he's, he's under $56,000 from last year. So I know y'all are watching every penny. I just, those permit fees and our property taxes, that's, that's really where we got to be careful.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I got, I got Mo on the sales taxes. Is a lot of that the fast food related down there with Chick-fil-A, Chipotle that we didn't have last year? Is that where we're seeing a lot of the increase this year and going forward?
Yes, sir. And obviously, this is going to fluctuate from year to year. Whereas Katina mentioned, we had about, we anticipated 125 new home starts on the property tax side. One year, we may only have a third of that, and the following year have a greater abundance of it. So it'll vary from year to year, but we're seeing quite a bit of growth on the sales tax side.
Okay.
Because our property tax does make up such a large portion of our, of our revenue source in our general fund, we always want to take a look and remind council and the public of the components that go into our property tax calculation. We start with the gross appraised value, and that's given to us by the appraisal districts. And from there, and that actually, that appraisal value, it estimates the market and what the, the value of the homes are in our taxing jurisdiction. From there, we get our taxable value, and that takes the appraised value less any exemptions. And that would be our homestead exemptions, our senior freezes, our disabled persons, disabled vet exemptions, and our freeze ceilings. We also, that gives us our levy, which is the total tax levy, and that's what those properties are valued at after those exemptions and adjustments. And then we multiply that by our tax rate that's adopted by council. And then that gives us our total levy. And then we apply that revenue or that levy by the collection rate. And for us, our collection rate is around 99%. It's between 98, 99% on, on an annual basis. This year, we are seeing those come in at a little bit, those prior-year collections or delinquencies coming in a little bit slower than, than we had anticipated.
Katina, one, actually, two questions. I'm happy to hear that the tax, the tax payments are coming in. However, I think we probably need to anticipate that going forward, people last year hadn't been hit by COVID-19 or loss of jobs and things like that. So I would want us to at least have some wiggle room in there. The other thing I'm concerned about related to that COVID-19 as well is that people's values potentially have gone up. They may be in there asking for those to be lowered in. Is there a trend or is there a history there that kind of shows us of our appraised values that come in initially when we get the final number, when people have gone in and asked for their appraisals to be reduced? Is there a trail or a history or a pattern that we can maybe anticipate? I guess what I'm trying to say is, I, I know we're looking good right now, and I'm excited, but I have reason to believe we probably aren't going to really feel what's happened until the fall. And I'm, I am still hesitant about all those things. So I don't want us to be overly optimistic. I don't want to be Debbie Downer either, who her name Debbie, I apologize. But, but I just don't want to be overly optimistic either. I want to be very realistic with our numbers. So I just was curious if there's any history, not that it will necessarily apply right now, but I don't think our past history would be any worse than what we might see going into this fall.
That is true. Each year, when we get our certified values from the appraisal districts, we have an estimated amount of properties that are under protest at that time. And then throughout the year, we get supplemental tax rolls where those go through the appraisal review board and are added to the tax rolls. So we get that on a monthly basis from the tax office, and we're watching those as well all the time. So like you said, this year may be a little bit harder to anticipate because we've never experienced anything quite like this. We're very fortunate, I feel, in, in Friendswood that we are that 80-20 split. So where others may, other taxing entities may see, you know, like the economic downturn or falls because of the economic downturn, we don't always experience that to the same level that others do. But we will be watching those protested values. We do anticipate that we will have quite a bit in protest at certification. So we will be watching those as we go through the year and making adjustments as we need to.
Thank you, Katina.
You're welcome.
For our homeowners, and it's not in tonight's presentation, I will mention, six out of the last 10 years, Friendswood has adopted the effective tax rate or less. So regardless of what their values may have done in fluctuating, Friendswood has brought in the same amount of levy as they had over the previous year, with the exception of new construction. So we've been able to survive off of that new construction. As that dwindles down, that does impact our margins considerably.
And in the plan, we are anticipating, based on the preliminary values that we've seen so far, we're expecting our appraised value to be around $5 billion. That is up about 6% from last year. We've factored about 5% increase in the plan. So we're trying to look at it from a conservative standpoint, but knowing that we are, we may see and experience some.
I do have one quick question, this is probably for you, Mo. I saw somewhere, and I don't know if it was Mark Henry or if it was the state legislature that was proposing that we freeze the tax values at the 2019 levels. Has that, has that been addressed at all?
So Governor Abbott's office and Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick spoke about this a couple weeks ago, and in short, they said that it's not the state's job to intervene in this regard. Rather, it's the local taxing authorities to determine what rate they need to set to provide property tax relief for the residents. So I won't speak for the other jurisdictions, but as I mentioned earlier, Friendswood has been very thoughtful in that regard.
Yeah, I certainly understand that and appreciate that. I was just wondering if, for the citizens, are they going to look at their appraised value from 2019? Because the thing that they get concerned about is their appraised value, right? Which most of them skyrocketed. Is Galveston County appraisal district adopting, are they freezing and keeping the 2019? Or are they allowing for the 2020 appraisals?
So it's the 2020 appraisals.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, thanks.
And Harris County's doing the same, I'm guessing?
Yes, ma'am.
So the, these were on a 5% that y'all actually forecasted?
Yes.
Okay, good. And I think that's, I think that's a pretty safe number because I assume that anything comes down about half, that's typically the rate anyway.
And there are homeowners that receive their property appraisals and may have noticed an increase of greater than 10%. There will not be an increase from year-over-year greater than 10%. So if your value went up, let's say 30% for your very next taxable year, it's only going to go up 10% per state law.
So Katina, you said the values this year were up 6% over last year?
We're anticipating about 6%.
So if they were 5% last year, then you're saying 11% about? 6% more than last year's percentage growth?
6% more than last year's value.
Than last year's value, okay. So just to let y'all know, none of the school districts in the county made their values as far as the comptroller's office. So the comptroller's office said that they were all value, undervalued. And so the GCAD is protesting that, and I haven't heard if the state has said yea or nay, if they won their protest or not. But when I heard that back January 31st, I think I mentioned to some of y'all that we would probably see huge jumps in the values this year because the state basically holds the GCAD and every appraisal district, you know, accountable for what they believe are fair market values. So I don't know how that's going to work with, with being lowered this year, I don't know.
Is that, is that based on their budgets or is that based on their opinions?
No, it's based on fair market value. And the state does random sampling, and they decide what the value should be. And then they look at what the appraisal district has valued, and if they're within a 5%, it's not, it's supposed to be at 95% or more. And if it's not, then school districts get dinged in their, their funding from the state. So as local values go up, state, school districts collect more in their taxes, the state pays less. And every school district, I think, but High Island in the county, was negatively affected this year.
And that's probably a lot coming back from Harvey, correct?
I don't know for sure. I mean, GCAD has a different opinion about that, but I don't know what the state's going to say.
And do the school districts know about this no-new tax revenue idea that we are always trying to apply?
Not so much.
Not so much there?
I mean, we have to, the school districts have to do the same thing, but they, they can separate their debt service. So it's a little bit different with this school district and this, and this.
So your, your city tax bill will stay about the same as last year? I can speak for the council because I know how they think and how they act. We can't control what the school district, I'm sorry, I'm gesturing towards you as if you're irresponsible, but you used to be, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so, I mean, the reality... Yeah, so the, the reality of it is, it doesn't matter how much your property value goes up, it's how much the taxing entities decide they're going to charge you, right? Your home value could go up 300%, but if the school district and the city and the county decide that they're going to cut their revenue stream, then your taxes will be less year-over-year.
So the city has a lot...
What's interesting though, and I find this funny, probably because I've been up here for so long, but that, that people get in an uproar about their appraised value, but rarely do you see them at school board meetings, county meetings, or city hall meetings talking about the tax rate. It doesn't matter what your appraised value is, it's how much we decide we're going to collect, so.
Well, that is true for county and city as far as revenue. But for the school district, just to educate everybody, it, the, it's a formula, and the state and the local add up to a number. So when the state goes down, their share goes down, they expect the local to make it up, so. That's it. Yeah, it just makes sense, yeah.
Glad you got to participate in that.
Thank you. We're here for the party. The, our, and as a reminder, our tax rate does include our debt service rate as well as our maintenance and operations rate. And our next slide, in this slide, we are hoping to, or we've tried to summarize the Texas Senate Bill 2, also known as the Texas Property Tax Reform and Transparency Act of 2019. There are some terminology changes, some we've already talked about. The effective tax rate is now the no-new revenue tax rate. Our rollback, what was formerly known as the rollback rate, is now the voter approval tax rate. The revenue cap included in the Senate Bill reduces the amount or the percentage of increase that a taxing entity can, can go up. It used to be 8%, it's now 3.5%. As I previously mentioned, those entities that adopt the sales tax relief, that 3.5% is, is slightly less than that. It only applies, as Marad mentioned, to the maintenance and operations. So on that voter-approved rate, it's just on the maintenance and operations portion because the debt service obligation has to be met. So that's factored in, and then that would be a reduction on the maintenance and operations side. There is an automatic rollback election that's, that, there's language for an automatic rollback election if an entity chose to adopt a rate higher than the voter approval tax rate. So it would be an automatic election. There wouldn't be a petition for a rollback of the citizens. It would just be an automatic property tax rollback election. The tax rate adoption deadlines, if we, or if we or another taxing entity were to adopt the no-new revenue rate, we could actually adopt our tax rate five days after those rates are published in the newspaper. By law, we have to publish the no-new revenue rate and the voter-approved rate by August 7, I believe, is the deadline still? And we could adopt the rate five days after that, if we were adopting the no-new revenue rate. If we're adopting...
If we're adopting a rate higher than the no-new revenue rate, but less than the voter-approved rate, there are some other, there's another publication and a public hearing that has to take place. Only one public hearing, not two, as we've had to do in the past. And again, if we were to adopt the, a rate higher than the voter-approved rate, by law, we would have to adopt that rate by August 17th this year, because you have to adopt, or have to set the rate, and then call for the rollback election. So, in order for it to make the November election, we'd have to adopt that rate by August 17th this year. And that date would change from year to year, depending on when the general election for November would occur. Also included in the Senate bill is something new introduced, is the unused increment rate, meaning that if an entity adopts a tax rate that is less than the voter-approved tax rate, that difference between the rate adopted and that voter-approved rate could be rolled forward. It could be carried forward over a three-year rolling period, so, and that begins with this tax year, 2020.
And if you don't take that in the three years, you lose that incremental difference?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just to reiterate, staff is not proposing to go anywhere near the voter-approved tax rate.
Our tax rate drivers included in the multi-year financial plan, we always estimate using the effective tax rate, or now the no-new revenue rate. It generates approximately the same revenue on properties that are taxed in both years. So, that's how we develop the plan, but we've also worked scenarios at the flat tax rate, as well as the voter-approved tax rate, just so that you'll be able to see that, and we'll go through that in, a little bit later in the plan, or in the presentation. The revenue growth from revaluations and new construction is included in the plan. We are anticipating a need for a tax rate increase, just because, as we mentioned earlier, we do have new debt that is, that was adopted, or voters-approved debt service issuances, and we factor that into the plan. And also, those protested values and freeze ceilings that we anticipated in this budget year are coming in a little bit less than we had anticipated, so that factors into this next year, because we base it on our, we base our revenue projections for the following year on our certified property tax value with those supplemental rolls, so.
And we will have further discussion, obviously, as we go through the budget cycle. I will note, this year, though, we have seen a reduction in new construction. So, whereas before, we were able to do fairly well, or decent with the effective tax rate, because the new construction offset the growth in our cost, we have seen a reduction in new construction, so.
Moving on to other key planning assumptions, our key expenditures. In the plan, we have our existing personnel with a 3% increase there to, for wages and associated benefits. Our non-personnel expenses included in the plan are trending, or we're, we're estimating about a 2% increase on those, based on our historical trends. This five-year, looking back over our last five years, we've got the Hurricane Harvey expenses in one year and out the next year, so we've tried to, to look at what our, what our flat expenditure year over year would have been if we didn't have that. So, we're looking at about a 2% increase on those non-personnel expenses in the plan over the five-year window. In the plan, we also always look at our fund balance by, by city financial policy. It requires us to maintain a 90-day operating reserve, and it allows for the use of unassigned or undesigned, it should be unassigned fund balance, that, that terminology changed as well, for the items that are listed on the screen, that can be used for emergencies or one-time expenditures that don't have an ongoing operating cost associated. Any major capital purchases can be used from the 90-day reserve, above the, the 90-day, our fund balance, above the 90-day reserve. And we'll take a look further in the presentation at what the impact to our fund balance looks like.
Are waiting on reimbursements now from that?
Yes, sir. Whereas previous months, and you'll see it tonight on the budget amendment, we've, we've been in excess of about $2 million above the 90-day emergency reserve. Over the course of the last several months, we've had to outlay the, the funds to purchase the buyouts that were included in both the hazard mitigation program, as well as the flood mitigation assistance program. They will be reimbursed to us, but for the time being, we've already outlaid close to $2 million.
Right.
And Katina, just one point of clarification, when you talked about the 3% increase on personnel, those aren't cost-of-living increases, those are merit raises, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
This, this slide is one that we, we present, and we have this one, as well as the one for the flat tax rate, our projected or estimated flat tax rate and the voter-approved rate. This slide shows our no-new revenue rate included in the, the multi-year plan. It, the blue line represents the revenues that we're anticipating over the five-year window. The red line shows our base expenses. This is our current services, service levels, as, as we are right now today. The black dotted line indicates the current service level, as well as the decision packages that have been submitted by the department.
So, I have a quick question.
Sure.
The, on a percentage basis, the difference between revenue and base expenses is what? 3%? 2%?
It's about-
Right now, based on, on these wonderful charts that I've got to enjoy for 10 years.
So, no.
We'll never exceed the red line, it won't happen. But, but that's okay. But, but, so that number where the, where the expenses and the revenue start on the chart, that gap is what, 2%? 5%?
It's about a percent. So, whereas previous slide, you were looking at Katina's information, we're growing at about 3% on the expenditure side, only 2% on the revenue side.
Okay.
On the surface of it, we're going to outpace ourselves on the expenditure side, simply because those are known quantities. We can easily project personnel costs, since we're a service-oriented business.
No doubt.
On the revenue side, we have a little difficulty anticipating what we're going to see in terms of new constructions, and what the market will do from year to year.
Got it, got it. So, just to be clear, if we were to cut the budget by 1%, those lines would match?
If we, if we were to cut the budget by 1%, we would be underneath the, the red line, however, there would be a severe impact to operational services.
Just looking at the numbers?
Yes, sir.
The numbers.
So, that is an opportunity where that, you know, however big that is, we can count, is mitigation towards one of these projects. Okay, so the Wickham property, it's 400 feet wide, terracing, 2,500 feet length. They are seeing half a foot to, to 0.6 foot reduction. I don't have any graphics I can show yet, because this is really preliminary, but I, I had, I had kind of done some rough estimates on costs that I'd presented before at the bond meeting, and this, we were looking at probably 25 million, and that didn't, and that didn't include any kind of mitigation. So, if we had to build, you know, like, offline detention to mitigate this, that would be even higher. So, just in comparison to, to Imperial Estates, okay.
To highlight some of the benefits for both this project, as well as the Imperial Estates project, is there's no land acquisition cost. These are the properties that we're able to get the property for free, projects we can get the property for free, so that goes a long way towards putting mitigation improvements in place.
Yeah, and, and there's, I'll talk a little bit more, you know, we have a great relationship with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. They get these projects built for, I don't even know how they do it so cheap, but they find magic ways to get rid of the dirt, and I think that they have good relationships with the people that they work with, so the costs are a lot lower than other places that I've seen cost estimates from. But they have mentioned that if they finish, if they finish the Imperial Estates project, that they may finish it sooner than they thought, and they might be able to just shift somewhere else, like Wickham, or, we have, we have kind of another idea, and I'll mention that later and bring it back up, of where they might be able to move. Okay.
It's the other side of the creek.
We do, or we will, in short order, Frenchman's Creek was one of the ones that we had talked about.
Yeah, I'm gonna, so I'm going to talk about that one. That's another area where I think that they could move, because it's, we're gonna, we're gonna go through all these community, I think I reversed that, it should be community block development grants, disaster cover. We actually have six different grants. One is going to be for Black, the Blackhawk Building. I'm not going to talk about that tonight, but just, you know, that's, that one, and then there are two acquisition, and the other ones are flood control projects. So, we'll talk about Frenchman's Creek here in a second. So, the first one is the Forest Bend Offline Detention, I've already talked about that one. This one, we already have approval. It is, in fact, I believe, out for RFP as we speak. So, we, the clock's ticking, that's going to be completed engineering and construction within two years. And all of these projects, it's going to be really critical to, they, there's, there's very specific deadlines that we have to meet in order to receive the grant, so we're going to have to be on top of that. And we have to, we, we will get reimbursed throughout the project for the funding. So, in order to get reimbursed, we're going to have to keep really good funds. So, that's a lot of projects to juggle, you know, six different grant projects. So, engineering's going to be very busy, and so is finance. So, this is a three, about a three and a half million dollar grant. Our contribution is 25,000. It's going to be for offline detention. The project costs, I think, we're thinking it's going to be around 70 to 90 acre feet. There is opportunity to expand that later, and I'll show you on the, on an image in just a second. And then it will also include trails and lighting. And the land for this is owned by the Forest Bend Homeowners Association, so we don't have to acquire the land. So, I've, I've shown this before, but we're, we're talking, you know, it may, I, I don't know how they'll end up doing it, it'll, it'll be this area, or this area here, but I don't think that it'll cover the entire area for that amount of funding. But we can count the 70 or 90 acre feet towards some of these, or as mitigation towards some of these terracing projects, so that's great.
The Drainage District is terracing the peninsula just on the opposite side of the creek, from where Samantha drew. Yes.
Yeah, I, I would have to get a map and, and look, I haven't thought about it. I do have, I, one of the things I want to work with, we, we just have, we have a new GIS hire, and she's amazing, and I want to get with her, because I've talked with the GCCDD and pulled, they have like all this knowledge of where they've done stuff, hiding in their heads, and I have it all like down on a map, but we want to get it digital, so we can share that with everybody. Okay, so Frenchman's Creek is a property acquisition project, but in order for us to receive the funding for the acquisition, we will have to either put a park feature here, or do terracing. So, the grant for the acquisition is for a million, I'm going to flip here, because this is, so, we, our grant is for this part here, for two structures, these are townhomes, and then Galveston County as a separate CDBGDR grant for these properties back here. As far as we know, they're both going to be going through, but, you know, we're, we're thinking that we might be able to work with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District here to do some type of terracing project. I did some rough cost estimating of what a terracing project for that whole area would be, and I think we're looking at like somewhere between one and, one and a half million.
That's all of Frenchman's Creek?
Yeah. So, and the other one, and this goes hand in hand, it's, it's two grants, one's for Deepwood Property Acquisition, the other one is going to be for terracing. And the Fire Marshal's Office is, is managing a lot of these grant acquisition jobs, so they're, they're going to be just as busy as engineering handling these. But it's going to be 17 parcels, demolition of 11 structures, it's around $900,000, and this is, this is the area. And there was, so I, I, this was before my time, but we have, we had build, or we have a building over here, right? Yeah.
And we're working with FEMA and getting that finalized, and ultimately, it'll be torn down, it's the old Public Works, the old Parks facility located in a Deepwood. I don't know if it's in Samantha's presentation, but later tonight, you have an interlocal agreement with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District to acquire nine properties along Minglewood, just upstream of this.
Okay, I, well, I have seven. I didn't know it had turned into nine, that's-
It is nine, but for $62,000. So, I commend the Fire Marshal's Office and the Drainage District on a job well done to get that many- The Minglewood.
The fishing shanties.
Uh, just upstream of those, this is just upstream of those. So, we're going to get what you referred to, Councilmember Rock, but as well as some other properties. And 62,000 represents the city's share, not the total cost.
So, this is the, the proposed terracing project. The blue areas are the Deepwood Acquisition. The purple are already owned by Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and the red are owned by the City of Friendswood. So, so, you know, I, I don't know what exactly will come out of this, but we'll, we'll have a terracing project here within the next two years, so.
What's not highlighted on that map is the old Public Works and Parks Facility, that concrete area that would come out of there, too.
Right.
That would be removed.
That would be removed.
So, so will that be part of the terracing project as well?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that, that's great. Okay. Yeah, so all these are going to be going on simultaneously. We're, we've, for the Blackhawk and the Forest Bend, we've received authorization, but the rest of these, we've, we've heard that they're going to go through, and I, I, you know, we're just waiting to get the final approval, so. Degrubbing, I think that, I think that Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District made that up maybe, but it's, it's like clearing out, clearing out the bushes and the shrubs and-
Their definition's a little different from the flood control districts.
Hey, hey, do not pick on those fellows.
No. I like their definition.
I'm related to one.
Steve, they just want to make sure they don't say the word dredge.
Yes.
Anything but the word dredge.
I don't think you can say that one now, either.
Okay, so, I think this is the last CDBGDR project. This is for the pipe rack relocation along Clear Creek. This is, one's around 1.1 million. I'm just going to shoot to the next one. So, this is, this is the pipe rack. There's been a lot of erosion. You can, you can see it back through here, if you look on Google Earth, and then it was eroded really bad around here, to the point where, you know, in the next five years, it was at risk of collapsing. And this also is kind of a dangerous area for kids, there's a lot of ropes hanging off of it. So, this project is to relocate, there's actually three different lines, they're going to relocate them underneath Clear Creek. I'm going to touch base on the Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bay Study. This is actually turning out to be a pretty fascinating study. This is, or, there's a lot of partners involved in this, and it's, the, the core is involved, and the, the more as the study goes on, it looks like it is possibly going to become a core study with a possible local match. The area being studied is in red, that's the watershed. So, Friendswood is the upper portion being studied, and it's, it's going to be pretty pertinent that they take care of all the flow coming from Friendswood, because that's adding flow and flooding everybody downstream. So, some of the things that they're initially talking about, they're, they've, they've looked at the Bediant Study, they're talking about terracing, not only through Friendswood, but then all through League City, and then possibly even changing the outlet at the, at Clear Lake. And then other, other thoughts are continuing on, on some of Bediant's diversions, or looking at different diversions, and even looking at tunnels. So, the, the cost order of magnitude, that really preliminary that they're talking about is like 500, 500 million to over a billion. And so, then the, the local partner's share, you know, it's not set in stone, but it, it could be as high as 50% of that, but once again, you've got all these entities that are going to be working together, so. So, that's just something to think about as we go forward. We've had a lot of meetings, the most recent one was May 28th, so they were, they were giving us some of their initial concepts, but they're going to be meeting with the stakeholders- but they're going to be meeting with the stakeholders throughout this process and they plan to meet with the public some more. The, they moved the study completion up to February 2021. So, so hopefully we'll hear something back from that sooner rather than later. Okay, and the last thing, I'm, I'm gonna touch on this. None, none of this is set in stone, but we're, we're starting to think about what we wanna do for the community block development grants, the mitigation grants. The deadline is gonna be October 28th of this year. Um, go ahead and switch it here. So, um, the mitigation action plan has been approved. They actually just put out the application packets this week. Um, the minimum funding for a project is 3 million. The maximum funding is 100 million. There is a scoring criteria to qual, to qualify. And one of the things that is gonna hinder us with these applications is that the low to moderate income, um, scoring takes, it's up to 20 points on it. So that's gonna hit us pretty hard on these. But we, we qualify for up to nine or 10 of these grants. Three, um, we can, so we can do three local for Hurricane Harvey, three regional for Hurricane Harvey. And then we can also apply to 2015 and 2016 floods and use Harvey benefits, although I don't know, they, they say we can use the Harvey benefits, but we don't really know how that would score with people that were flooded during 2015 and 2016. So. So, um, so we're still, we're, we're kind of throwing ideas out there. Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District really wants to partner with us. So I'm gonna go through a couple of the ones that we've been talking about, but, um, as, you know, as we go along through this proc, you know, hopefully earlier rather than later, if, if, if somebody has a great idea, we're open to hearing that. And, um, and I'm sure I can do a whole presentation on that next time I come. So the first one, the, I guess they look kind of tan in here. I had seven Minglewood properties, but Mo says that there's nine. So there's these properties along here and then we both own some property along there already. This is the Deepwood area. And then, so we were, we, we were kind of playing with this idea of maybe some, some kind of channeling here and even here. And then we could offset some of the, um, the terracing, the rise downstream with some kind of detention. So kind of like a, a package project there. And then another area, we were talking about partnering with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District is the Shadow area. Um, they found out, they just found out that we, you know, that we now own this property. And, um, so there's a few owners over in here that they've been working with to try and sell property. So. Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, so there, I think that this, I mean, the, so the, so the pink, I guess, is properties we own. Blue is properties owned by Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. I went and walked Stevenson Park and Old City Park. I don't really see much opportunity at Stevenson Park, but I think that if we can agree with parks, whether we might be able to do some things in Old City Park in combination with this to make it a bigger flood control project. So I think there's a lot of, um, opportunity here. This is, so, so, um, so that was two regional ones that were kind of floating around on, on terms of the local side. The Blackwater wastewater treatment plant. Um, Mo, these property, this part right here, we don't own these, right? Yeah, so we'd have to acquire those. But we do own this property here. The, the blue on there is just showing that there is a wetland there. So we'd have to deal with that at some point. But so this is the Blackwater, the Blackwater wastewater treatment plant area is an option. The Wickham property is an option. And, and those are kind of, you know, what we're throwing around so far. But any questions?
I just think you've made a lot of progress in, what, three or four months since the last time you were here? It's, it's real exciting.
That's good. I would echo that. I'm very excited. Thank you for your hard work.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks Samantha, great job.
Thank you Samantha, good job.
How about it? I'm up for that. Come back at five after. How about that? How about that? Have a gavel. That's the second time. Communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against the city employee, aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge, cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. Philip Ratso. Good job on that ZBOA meeting the other week, Bill.
Thank you.
I thought you made good decisions. I don't wanna be a backseat ZBOA guy, but good job.
Common sense, you know.
Common sense is not common.
Well, good evening, council. Uh, I'm here to say I loved Samantha's presentation. Lots of hard work going in, lots of good things there. Uh, I want council, as the citizens are, to keep their focus on letting the data guide us in decisions that we make going down the road so that we spend our money well. But also that we encourage the, uh, the city to keep trying to get grant money as we can. And as, as you noticed, there are lots of it going on, lots of action. Uh, and I understand from Hill that there is, one of the items on the agenda is the, uh, to actually hire, bring on, uh, somebody, not a, a, a consultant that does the grant writing so that we can increase our chances of, of getting the grants and stuff. Highly encourage that. I think that's money well spent. It's not a, a whole lot, so it's well worth it for what we get there. Uh, and, uh, just encourage that we keep doing good work on this. And, and I, our citizens group has met with Hill and Samantha several times. And it's very encouraging, the things they're doing and the progress. Uh, I'd also like to say, uh, congratulations to Lisa Camp and of course, the rest of our Friendswood EMS. I don't know exactly what she did, but to get a hero award for the hundred, from the, the Hundred Club of Houston is something. So I say thanks to her and thanks to you and just keep the data in mind.
Thanks, Phil. David Allen.
Mr. Allen, I'll hold this up when you have one minute left. Okay, and then this one, time's up.
Thank you.
I forgot to tell Phil, but.
Yes, we know, we know the system.
That's right.
And the, the astronauts are flying again under US power. So that's pretty good. Uh, in fact, they supposedly used the Apollo launch pad. Apparently it's a lot bigger rocket than, than you'd think, the big booster that went up.
Same launch pad. I used two twice, but that's okay. Go ahead.
So anyway, so the, uh, the Minnesota, uh, problem. Uh, just pray for the country when you can because obviously, um, you know, if it were a black police officer and a black perpetrator, victim, whatever, uh, it would, you know, be ignored. And obviously this one's not ignored. We've had a black president for two terms. You can't call us a racist country, or can be racist people in it, certainly. Uh, we've had more, uh, you know, interracial marriages is now, you know, widely accepted. And, um, uh, it's not a, a segregated, you know, a hateful place like the media's making it out to be. It's really quite a wonderful country. But police work is difficult, you know, comply. If you get in the perpetrator vein and, or near, you know, suspected, do what you're told. And, uh, because the police officers got to figure everything out instantly and, and can't be, uh, can't have you going off on your own direction or things like this happen. And you get the adrenaline flowing and God knows what can happen. So, but just pray for the country. That has eclipsed Mr. Fauci. I'll just hold this up there because I know there's the camera up there. But just check out the Plandemic, plandemic.com, because he was head of the National Institute of Health Infectious Disease from 1984 till the last year or two. And, uh, gave 3.7 million dollars to the Chinese Wuhan bio lab to develop, uh, from that coronavirus, a, uh, gain of function thing that could infect humans. So he's kind of in on it. And he's promised another round for this fall just in time for the elections. So Plandemic. The other thing is with all these grants that we're taking, um, look at the fine print. I remember one time it was kind of hilarious. And, you know, I would say this is a non-harmful, uh, thing. The grant had an anti-Nimbyism clause. I don't know if you remember that. In other words, to get that money, we had to, the city had to give classes on why you shouldn't, why you shouldn't protest things. Why you shouldn't speak against bad things that might come into the community. That's crazy. But that was obviously, that's kind of a fuzzy one. But things like 5G, which is actually, it's anything between 30 and 300 gigahertz. That's the 5G or fifth generation. This is the active denial system by the Army. This is 95 gigahertz, well within the band. And, uh, unlike other types of cell, cell towers, this dissipates all the energy in the skin. And they put them every second or third light pole up and down the street. And, uh, they'll never tell you actually how much power they're putting out. They don't have to run on the battery. They got the wires right there. So they'll be putting out a lot. And, uh, these things, again, the 5G network is to spy and let your cars talk to each other, talk to the insurance companies you're following too close. Um, and read everything about you all the time. And, you know, now that, now we, they can find out where we are with our cell phones. They'll know if you moved an inch with the 5G. It's very controlling. And we are, we are the money. They're selling our data. It's not for us. We can already watch the people we're talking to on the computer. So we don't really need this 5G. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Item seven, city manager's report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, um, only 12 slides, Councilmember Scott, and I'll run through them quickly. First up, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. As you all know, we've had this project on the books for a number of years. In November of 2017, Galveston County had a bond election to include the extension of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard from roughly North Eagle Creek and the Friendswood Lakes subdivision south towards West Ranch. Uh, this was included as part of their bond program, but included some contributions both from the City of Friendswood to the tune of a million dollars and to the local developers that were gonna donate the right of way plus 600,000 dollars towards the project cost. Unfortunately designed due to wetlands and a variety of other things ran into some snags and just recently has been completed. It's currently being advertised for bid and we anticipate a, a contract being awarded later this summer with construction to start in fall of 2020. They anticipate a six to seven month, uh, construction time to get that extension complete. This will ultimately run through Sterling Creek and Av, the Avalon subdivisions that are both under construction. We are separate from this effort, working with, uh, various, um, state and federal grants to see about extending the, the roadway north of 528 towards Pearland. And we have some promising opportunities out there. It was mentioned earlier tonight by, uh, one of our citizens in regard to Lisa Camp's latest, um, uh, recognition. The Houston 100 Club, um, has awarded Chief Camp, uh, the Lifetime Achievement Award. Her nomination, uh, obviously covered a multitude of her accomplishments over her storied EMS career. Uh, but noted, uh, just her sheer breadth of knowledge and, uh, influence in, uh, emergency medical services. And we do know we have a gem in Lisa Camp and our, uh, entire EMS department. And we thank her for her service to the community. Waste Connections, it awarded their annual scholarships, uh, both on the Clear Creek ISD schools as well as the Friendswood Independent School District. On the Clear Creek side, we had Lauren N. with Clearbrook High School. She will be attending the University of Texas San Antonio and majoring in marketing. Uh, we have Kalen Doe with Clear Springs High School. She'll be going to Texas A&amp;M University and majoring in biochemistry. Hopefully finding a vaccine for, uh, the current pandemic. Uh, on the FISD side, we have Faith Perry. That she will be attending Trinity University, majoring in neuroscience. Obviously, none of these, uh, career paths are too shabby. We're very, uh, proud of our citizens and students here in Friendswood and wish them well in their future endeavors. And definitely thank Waste Connections for the scholarships they've granted to those students. Hurricane Harvey, uh, you'll have some agenda items later on, uh, tonight for consideration regarding the buyout programs. Uh, just as a brief history, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, this was a 75-25 grant of which 24 homes were included on the buyout program. Three properties have since closed, we've closed on the properties that are in that, they're now in the City of Friendswood's possession. And we're working with, uh, Texas Division of Emergency Management to re, reimburse those costs that we've outlaid for these projects. Uh, seven properties are under negotiations currently. Uh, and those properties were sent final offer letters and hopefully, uh, we'll get this resolved shortly. 14 properties have declined altogether. Uh, the action you have on your agenda later tonight is to award a demolition contract to get those homes, uh, torn down and slabs removed. Uh, Texas Water Development Board Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant. As a reminder, this was 100% grant that involved no local match. Aside from the initial outlay of cash, we will be reimbursed our costs. There were four properties included in this application. Two we've closed on or just about closed on, um, to date. One is under negotiation and one declined the offer altogether. Also on tonight's agenda is an RFP, uh, awarding a contract for demolition services associated with those, those properties. You heard it in Samantha's presentation earlier tonight, our Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery, um, Grants. On, first on the Harris County side, we've had a kickoff meeting with Harris County who received the direct allocation of these grant dollars for the Blackhawk facility. This is the old Food Lion Building that we're currently under a lease purchase agreement. Uh, they toured the facility last week and, uh, in the process of, um, uh, selecting, uh, engineers and architects to design a plan to, uh, make the renovations to house an emergency shelter on the Harris County side of the city. Some segment of the grant funds will go towards the purchase of the building and some will go towards the renovations. This project was also included in our 2019 bond election, uh, 2 million dollars for renovations for that particular facility. Uh, I will mention it later tonight, uh, well, later on in this slide. Uh, we are working towards a purchase of that facility. We're getting really, really close with FEMA on finaling out both Deepwood and Shadowwell and hope to have that building purchased within this summer. And finally be able to make that a, that project move forward. Samantha mentioned it in her, uh, comments earlier tonight. We've also finalized contracts with Harris County for the Forest Bend Detention Project. Uh, we are currently advertising for, uh, qualified engineers for that effort. Um, and we're working with Harris County on that. She also mentioned on the Galveston County side, two acquisition efforts, one at Frenchman's Creek. Uh, it includes, uh, both our application and Galveston County's for all five structures. Each structure has four units within them. Uh, as well as acquisition of properties along Deepwood that, uh, parallel Clear Creek as you meet at the confluence of Cowards Creek. Uh, once we acquire those properties, we can couple that with the properties along Minglewood that's on your agenda later tonight and pursue some, uh, substantial flood mitigation projects at that location. And that's the very next bullet is the interlocal agreement with the Drainage District for the nine properties along Minglewood Drive. Uh, I've already mentioned FEMA and we're hoping to get that finalized this summer for Shadowwell and Deepwood. COVID, uh, you've get, you've seen these daily reports, Mayor and Council have emailed you in the afternoon as far as our daily tallies. They're also posted on our social media pages. Uh, obviously, um, COVID has had significant impact, not just to Friendswood or to the, our region, but globally. Uh, we are working with, uh, state and, uh, federal officials on the coronavirus relief fund. So what this entails is the Corona, the CARES Act that was approved earlier this year has allocated some funding for not just municipalities, but the counties as well, uh, to offset some of their costs they've incurred, uh, related to their response in the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, these aren't costs to cover shortfalls in revenue. These are costs to outfit facilities to provide better spacing. Now, you've noticed that we spaced y'all out at the dais simply so that we can maintain the social distancing requirements that are called for in CDC guidelines. Uh, these were costs that the city's expended in additional disinfectants and, um, and PPE purchases for our first responders, police, fire, and EMS. Uh, as well as a, a number of other, uh, minor upgrades to our facilities. Uh, our allocation based upon our population is right at 2 million dollars, 1.5 on the Galveston County side, of which we've already gotten a deposit of 300,000 and change. Uh, and then 500,000. $500,000 on the Harris County side. Harris County, I will note, got a direct allocation, much like they did in CDVG, and we'd have to work with them on those efforts. We're currently putting our plan together, the funding was just released two weeks ago, and the $300,000 is already in our bank, and we can expend those funds, provided we comply with the restrictions that were established on them. The remainder of the funds will be done on a reimbursement basis if we have the cost to justify it. Obviously, I've mentioned it in months past, we've undergone a number of provisions to respond to COVID-19, both internally and externally. Early on, we instituted our pandemic plans, our continuity of operations plan, and we've been able to maintain services without impacting our citizens. Today, a number of city facilities reopened to the public. We've been open via online virtual services over the phone throughout this entire process, but City Hall and a number of other facilities opened back up to the public. There are some safety measures in place, so if you're meeting in public areas, obviously, you're welcome to come, visit, and ask to pursue whatever services you need. If you're going in security areas, you will have to have your temperature scanned so that we can limit the, the spread of the virus. We are seeing double-digit growth in the number of new cases in the, in our area, so it is a concern. Things need to open back up, and we're pushing that, not just from a municipal level, but in the area and the region. The economy is definitely hurting, but we want to make sure we do it in a fashion that is not exasperating the growth in the pandemic. We continue to, to communicate with residents about opportunities that are out there, especially for our business owners, as well as our homeowners that have been impacted, either they've lost a job, or there's some, some impact to, to them as a result of COVID-19. This also applies to their utility services, so if there's an issue and they're without income, we'll work with whoever to get things to where they need to be moving forward. We can't outright write off anybody's bills, but we can definitely work with them on a payment plan or structure if they can demonstrate a need. And we have, not just with COVID, we've done this for years. COVID, obviously, has impacted a number of activities. We've canceled concerts in the park earlier this month, or they typically start in May. We are looking at a slightly different format to allow for the events while maintaining some, some safety measures in place, so you'll see later this month, we'll start concerts in the park, but drive-in style at Centennial Park. So families are encouraged to go out there, sit in their vehicles, sit in their pickup beds, our lawn chairs around their vehicles, and enjoy a free concert out in Centennial Park. We are, we just recently did the virtual Memorial Day Remembrance, very well done by the Parks Department and by Jeff Newfer, remembering our brave men and women that have served our country and paid the ultimate sacrifice. Summer Day Camp has been canceled. We're evaluating modifications of the Fourth of July celebration. I footnote that, because, and I'll discuss it on the next slide. We had a sales tax reauthorization election scheduled for this past May. I would like to say it passed, but unfortunately it got postponed. So the, the election will take place in November. The primary runoff elections that were previously scheduled for late spring have moved to July, and we're working with Galveston County to have those elections at our library in that front conference room. The Fourth of July, the daytime and nighttime festivities have been canceled, so the carnival at Stevenson Park and the concert at Centennial Park have both been canceled. There was no way to achieve that with the social distancing requirements that have been put in place. We are looking at doing the parade still. We are going to have a celebration. We're looking at doing it similar in style to what the Fire Department does annually for Santa, and that is broken up into smaller sections and doing a parade throughout the entire city. So rather than our citizens congregating in one particular area, and we don't have the resources to ensure they're properly spaced, we're going to bring the parade to them so they can enjoy it with their family and friends and their front lawns. The fireworks display will not take place, unfortunately, Fourth of July in the evening. A number of cities around us have canceled their fireworks display, and there's really no good way to hold it and manage crowds. We had looked at a variety of options, either breaking it up into two fireworks shows on either part of, either side of the city, or if not three, but we're not able to do crowd control, we're not able to ensure social distancing, we're not able to keep people from parking in front of other people's homes to, to make sure that the flow of traffic remains and emergency services can continue to operate. With that, I'll take any comments or questions?
Well, our receptionist in the front, I noticed there's some tape or whatever, kind of securing a distance for her. Do we have anything more secure or permanent that you're looking at?
So we're working with, we had to get some legal guidance from the state earlier today, so with federal funds, the funding that's going to provide some of the safety measures for the receptionist have to be procured in a certain manner, so we didn't want to put the cart before the horse and put up anything permanent without verifying that it was procured properly. We got notice today that we can move forward with some of those permanent improvements. You will see those measures in place within the next couple of weeks.
Who's taking the temperatures?
So-
Is she taking everyone's when they come in, if they have to go somewhere, or?
So it's done on a department-level basis, so every department's been assigned one temperature taker and their infrared thermometers, so they're touch-free, and then a backup taker, so no one can take their own temperatures, so that there's some consistency. If an employee registers a temperature of greater, greater than 100.4, they're asked to go home, and they can use their sick time to offset their, their time.
And I experienced that this evening when I got here, it's not a big deal.
Correct.
Very kind.
They hit me in the head with the thermometer just to make sure that it registered.
...
Yeah, and so it doesn't, I will note, it does not apply to the public, so if you're in attendance here tonight at a council meeting, you don't have to have your temperature taken. It's only if you're going into secured areas. Obviously, we fared very, thank God, we've fared very well throughout this pandemic. We haven't had a single employee contract COVID-19, but our neighbors can't say the same thing, and they've had their operations disrupted substantially. I will say, League City had their entire Fire Marshal's Office shut down for a two-and-a-half-week period because they had the virus there. It's not an indication of their operations versus ours, but it's just a matter of, we have to be extra cautious.
I find it just amazing that we're not even celebrating independence from a tyrannical government, where we were given liberties and freedoms to make our own choices for our own interest because the government tells us we can't. It's really sad. I think that you should have individual choice. If you choose to do it, do it. If you don't want to go, don't go. It's just crazy.
Okay, I was going to just stay quiet, but it, it's really hard. I'm very sympathetic, Mo. It's very hard when you're spending taxpayers' money, and the medical community is saying you should do this. It's very hard to go against that and use taxpayers' money to possibly endanger. People can still have their celebrations at their homes, and I think your solution of trying to find a way to continue the parade and to celebrate in the community, to be creative, I commend you all for that, because it's a, it's a hard thing to go against medical advice on a medical issue, so I understand it.
I do have one question as it pertains to the Fourth of July budget.
Yes, sir.
Will the Fourth of July group be allowed to carry forward any money not expended this year that was budgeted for this year and use it next year to blow it out?
With council's permission, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing I'd like to say is, you know, sometimes when you're forced to change, it's, it's pretty interesting and fun. Some of us attended the drive-through graduation at the high school, that was really fun, and I think, I think the kids enjoyed it, so I think they might do it again in the future, so.
Well, I think your solution for a Fourth of July parade is very innovative. You know, I think we're just lucky that we have the size of the city that we have, because any city, League City couldn't do it. I mean, they could not possibly have enough mini parades to cover their, their city and do this, but we, the size that we are today, I think it's, it's just thinking outside the box, and people will be able to stay in their front yards mostly and not congregate, so I, I think it's great, so. Take the parade to the people, and dad gummit, we will celebrate for the 125th year. All right, item eight, Communications from Committees and Special Reports, Annual Report from Library Board Chair or Library Director, Matt Riley. I can be-
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm happy to be here. I'm here on behalf of our Board Chair, Diane Freeman, who couldn't be here this evening to give the Library Board Report. Diane did put the presentation together, and she did a good job, so it should be easy for me to get through it for you rather quickly. So first up is, these are some statistics from the last fiscal year. Library attendance was up 1.5% increase from the previous year. We had 188,806 visiting patrons in 2019. That averages out to around 630 daily visitors, so we're, we're a busy place. Circulation was also up. We checked out 348,875 total items last fiscal year. We gave out 2,382 new library cards to patrons. We added 8,328 new items to the collection. As you know, with the renovation, we were able to add some new meeting and study rooms, and those have been much appreciated and much used by the community. We scheduled over 3,000 meetings and study sessions for patrons last fiscal year, with over 84,000 sessions scheduled by patrons using the library's internet stations. Reference, our reference department, that's Mr. Drew Watkins on the left and Ms. Catherine Domski on the right, they do a wonderful job. They answered over 41,000 reference questions last year. Programming, the library hosted a total of over 1,170 programs to adult and children patrons. Attendance exceeded over 40,000 people last year, so that, our program attendance grows every year. The staff does a wonderful job with our programming. One example is our ZakiCon program. It's a annual anime and pop culture convention, and it grows in activities provided and attendance every year. This past year, we had 900 people attend over the three-day event, so that's wonderful. Other programs include storytimes, author visits, meditation, drum circles, workshops, movie nights, book clubs, poetry events, musicians, and classes such as computer training, job search assistance, and many other important functions, so we're excited about that. Book sales and book nooks. The library raised 9,688 from the sale of books at our two annual book sales, and then that also includes our new book nook, which is an ongoing book sale throughout the year. That's something added over this past fiscal year, and due to that, we had a 30% increase in money raised by the friends for the library this past year, so that was wonderful. Another highlight of last year was we were recognized by Texas Highways Magazine. They did a write-up, and we were called a forward-thinking library, one of four libraries in the state of Texas to, to be written about by Texas highways. And examples were our use of space, our programming, and our use of technology that we provided the community, so that was a nice highlight to the year. Also, for the sixth consecutive year, the Friendswood Library qualified for the TMLDA Achievement of Library Excellence Award by demonstrating excellence in 10 service categories. That puts the Friendswood Library in the top 10% of all libraries in the state of Texas to qualify for that distinction, so that was also another highlight to our year. Some key events, we hosted the May the Fourth Be With You Star Wars Celebration. Over 600 people attended that day-long event, and I would say about every character in the Star Wars universe walked through our doors during the day. It was really fun, everyone, all throughout the building doing activities, so that was fun. Also, the Apollo 11 50th Anniversary Panel Discussion was a four-week event where former engineers and astronauts presented their experiences with the Apollo 11 mission. We had 710 people attend those discussions, and that was also just a really wonderful time at the library. The Friends, or Friends of the Library, nonprofit group that raises money for the library, did an awesome job with their first-ever library gala. It was a speakeasy, read-so softly gala. They did a wonderful job with the music, the silent auction, the catering, and due to their hard work, they raised over $5,000 for the library, which we purchased some much-needed new shelving in the reference and children's department. Also, we had two-room naming dedications last year, where we invited the public to come and be a part of that. We renamed our large meeting room with the Joyceina Day Baker Conference Room in honor of our local historian, so we were so honored to do that, that was a wonderful event. And we also dedicated a room to the Friendswood Rotary Club, so those were both nice events. Thanks to the Friends of the Library for, for providing funds for additional programs, staff attendance to the Texas Library Conference, purchase of equipment, giveaways during National Library Week for their effort in setting up the book sales, and then again, the successful speakeasy gala. The Executive Board, President Madeline Short, Jim Foreman, Tammy Zarowski, Randy Wabel, Mona Palmer, and Diane Freeman all do a wonderful job for us. And then Diane wanted specifically to mention what's been going on at the library over the last couple of months during this pandemic time. We've been busy. The library, on a daily basis, the blessing of the library is we had a drive-through window. Not many libraries have a drive-through window, so they weren't able to continue to provide service. So we see an average of about 120 cars per day through the drive-through window since, that's just an average. Last Monday, we broke our record, 210 cars through, through the window in an eight-hour period. So we're, we're busy still providing books to the community during that time, you know, we've quarantined and sanitized books. Our children's department started a bookbag program, so the parents can call, tell us what interests their children have, we fill the books, they come get them through the drive-through window. That's been really popular. We've come up with new online content, we started a computer coding class, Spanish language, Great Decisions series, and other programs through Zoom, and those have been really appreciated. And as with all the other city facilities, we're following social distance, masks, and everything we need to do to stay safe for, for ourselves and for the public. And I'll just conclude by saying, as Murad mentioned, the library also reopened today. Very smooth day, no, no, no issues, everything went wonderfully well, and it was a pleasure to see community, community members back in the library, so, so, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks for the great job you do.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, Discussion and Possible Action. A discussion and possible action regarding the disposition of RFP number 2020-04, Demolition and Removal Services, up to 13 houses for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Second.
Motion in a second, just to remind us which, we've talked about all this tonight, just, this is the 13 houses on-
First, I want to thank Mo and Samantha, because they did most of the work for me tonight. I don't have to talk about much of the stuff that's on the agenda, but what you're seeing now is all the aftermath of the grants and other funding sources now coming available to us after Harvey, so that's what a lot of these items are. But this is the one that had the original 24 for this. We still had those seven that Mo was talking about that had not told us they weren't going to be part of it, and we have a few that we're still waiting on answers back, so it could be up to 14, but for sure, the three that we've purchased already, they'll be looking to get those demoed by the end of the month.
Right.
Okay, great. Good questions. All in favor? Item B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Disposition of RFP Number 2020-05, Demolition and Removal Services, up to four houses for the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program.
Second.
Motion in a second.
We have one that's ready to go, one that should be closing this month, so we'll have two hopefully by the end of the month or beginning of July that'll be ready, and then one, like Mo said earlier, that's declined, and one that's still, we're still negotiating.
Okay, all in favor? Item C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approving an Interlocal Agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for Flood Mitigation Projects on Minglewood Drive.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions on this one, we heard about this one.
So it is, it is nine properties.
Nine properties.
I think originally there were seven discussed, but the Drainage District did a great job negotiating and talking to the folks. These were unapproved properties, just to clarify, they were unapproved properties, there's nothing currently developed on them. they were unapproved properties. There's nothing currently developed on them. We already own several. I think if you look at the background mapping, it shows that we already own several between us and Galveston County Drainage District. I think there's maybe two properties left right through Minglewood up against the creek that have not been purchased, but for the most part, there's a large, a large portion in that area that have been purchased by either the city or the Drainage District that could be used for future projects.
Yeah, Murad, did we take care of the descriptions in that interlocal agreement?
So there was some misunderstanding with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District's part. That's the legal description for the property, and after we clarified that, they were comfortable with it. But we can very easily, if you'd like, add, spell it out a little further in the agreement.
I just wanted to make sure they're happy.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All in favor? Item D, discussion and possible action regarding approval of a cooperative purchase, Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract TP-07-18, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with PM Construction and Rehab LLC doing businesses, IPR South Central LLC for 2020 sewer rehab.
Second.
Motion in a second. Renee, what do you got? Rehab some sewers?
That is correct, sir. It's part of a rehab program, and this is through a cooperative purchase program through HGAC. All the pricing has already been scoped out, and the work is scoped out. We have areas to start work and work our way to Station 23.
As a reminder, this helps offset our INI infiltration and infiltration issue that we're having in our sewer system to offset the impact to the Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. All in favor? Item E, discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of public works software.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second.
Just a brief background, a few years ago, I believe Councilmember Rocky was on the panel. The city purchased some new enterprise software for finance, utility billing, and community development. Not included within that purchase was, there wasn't an appropriate application for public works-related efforts, war quarters, et cetera. Included within last year's budget was money to purchase some new software for the Public Works Department because their current software is no longer being serviced nor maintained by the software vendor. So before we had a major issue, we needed the transition.
Any questions? All in favor? Let's see, item F, discussion and possible action regarding interlocal agreement with the Harris County Flood Control District for the operation and maintenance of weather gauges located in Galveston County.
I'll make the motion.
Say what?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Samantha kind of laid this out for us.
Did. So Harris County Flood Control, they have the several gauges along the creeks that are aligned in Harris County. We did meet with them earlier, actually last year, to start the conversation. They've added some gauges. They actually also added one weather station along 2351. So all the gauges that are along Harris County or that are in that area, they're allowed to do. What this agreement is for is to cover some of the areas in Galveston County. So we have some specific gauges in Galveston County, also the weather station at the Public Safety Building that we like to see on their network. We think that would be a benefit to the citizens and to us to put it on their network, so you can see it at any time from any location. And we already had slated to purchase that anyhow. So we're going to purchase it, maintain the maintenance fee, or give them the maintenance fee, and then they're going to maintain it and put it on their network.
Great. Okay, all in favor? Okay, resolutions, consideration, and possible action regarding the following. Item A, Resolution 2020-14, resolution of the City of Friendswood authorizing the adoption of the Harris County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Action Plan update.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Yes.
Probably some guy with no hair.
Yeah, that's okay. So mitigation plan, a lot of these items we've been talking about tonight and over the last couple of months about mitigation. So the thing about our mitigation plans is to make sure that we have these items listed so we can get the funding for those mitigation programs. The City of Friendswood has its own mitigation plan. It expires later on this year. With the push from FEMA in the state to more regionalize these plans, we have entered agreements with both Galveston County and Harris County to make sure that we're part of their plans to go regionally. So in November, our plan will expire, but we'll be making sure that we continue on with Galveston and Harris County. This is for Harris County's plan for us to adopt. They just got done with all the work, and FEMA just adopted their plan. So we're going to approve it tonight, showing that, and it'll go forward. FYI, that Galveston County, we've just signed that we want to be part of their renewal. That'll be coming up in the next 24 months.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Resolution B, 2020-15, Resolution City Council, City Friendswood, Texas verifying that cybersecurity training has been completed and authorizing the city manager or his designated to submit all documentation required by Texas Government Code Section 2054.5191.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. I commend all the city staff for doing this cybersecurity training, and everybody up here apparently completed it. I'm so proud of this.
I know I was last because I saw the emails and thought they were spam.
I did, too.
And Melinda had to call me like an hour before the deadline.
That should have been the training, just to see if you opened the email. If you didn't, you passed.
You deleted every one of them.
Right, right. Okay. Well...
Well, you got it completed.
Motion in a second.
At the last minute.
Yeah.
All in favor? Resolution 2020-16, Resolution City Council, City of Friendswood, Texas authorizing and approving the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF, Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion, questions?
I will steal some of Brian's thunder. We discussed this somewhat earlier tonight during the city manager's report. This is funding through the CARES Act that the City of Friendswood automatically qualifies by per allocation. However, we're subject to the requirements of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. They have to be expended on improving the facility or expenditures incurred in response to the pandemic.
So the concerns Trish brought up about our personnel out here and various places, that would be something that these funds could be expended on.
Correct. And you will see modifications over the next month to six weeks throughout City Hall and some of the library and public works facility to offset the putting in some of those safety measures. It's an all-or-nothing proposition, though. We can't do some areas and not others. Otherwise, you invalidate your funding.
And how much of the dollars are we talking about?
Total, Friendswood is qualified for $2 million or thereabouts, but we have 300 and change already in the bank. The rest will be done on a reimbursement basis.
Very good, Mo. Thanks.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Six one, Resolution 2020-17, Resolution adopting rules of procedure for the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Friendswood, Texas pursuant to authority contained in Section 2-3 of the Code of City of Friendswood, Texas and repealing Resolution Number 2019-15.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Ordinances. Thanks, Aubrey.
Thank you for staying.
11A, ordinance number T20-25, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Friendswood, Texas, appendix C zoning by amending the zoning classification to assign single-family residential SFR as a zoning district for .1738 acres of vacated right-of-way and to allow a special-use permit, SUP, for nax use 8131 religious organizations as an overlay on the following properties: .1738 acres of vacated right-of-way, single-family residential SFR, 111 East Heritage Drive, 2.983 acres, downtown district, 209 South Friendswood Drive, 1.0528 acres, downtown district, 201 East Heritage Drive, .4223 acres, multifamily residential low-density MFR-L, 204 and 206 East Heritage Drive, .8151 acres, single-family residential SFR, 208 East Heritage Drive, .8913 acres, single-family residential SFR, and to replace the special-use permit on the property located at 202 East Heritage Drive, 2.98 acres, single-family residential specific-use permit, SFR/SUP 2001-09 for family life center.
Yes. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on a second reading? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, ordinance number T20-26, first and final reading of an ordinance amending City of Friendswood, Texas, ordinance number T2019-38, passed and approved October 7, 2019, same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 by approving Budget Amendment 7 to the original general budget of the City of Friendswood, Texas for the fiscal year 2019-2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Communications from mayor and council members. Stephen?
Yes, sir, Michael. John Mizell, who owned the property on Chadwell that we now own, has asked me to make a request for some future consideration. I'm just mentioning it tonight, and I'm not advocating one way or another. He's always called the property Eagle Heart. There's eagles that do nest on it, and he has a $5,000 eagle statue that he's willing to donate to the city if we will name at least part of that property Eagle Heart. So I just wanted to mention it in thinking about it, and I don't think we need any action on the as of yet, but I wanted to bring...
And if council's interested, you're obviously welcome to let me know, and we can put an item on a future agenda.
That's all.
Sally?
I just want to make two comments. I wanted to congratulate Lisa Camp again on our Houston 100 Club Hero Award and our EMS that also received an award. And then I had a call from a resident today, and this is for Chief Weeners, who I see is not here now, but they just said, and I have to agree, they sleep better at night knowing that our Friendswood Police Department are protecting our borders. So I just want to say thank you because I feel very much the same way. So, thank you.
Trish? Thank you. I also wanted to compliment Lisa Camp and our EMS. Those awards are well-deserved by the EMS and by Lisa. And KFB has been busy, even though they've been meeting virtually or the board has been meeting, and so they still have lots of plans for Stevenson Park. I'm sure they'll be resuming them soon with the Fairy Trail Garden, and they're still working on that garden, which looks awesome, the pollinator garden. So if you have a chance, go out there. But they have lots of things going on. And P&amp;Z keeps meeting, and you may have noticed this past month that Aubrey and Mo sent out a report on what KMB, I mean, what P&amp;Z had done that month, and some of the discussions. I thought that was really good for us to get ahead of time before a city council meeting so that you kind of know what they're really talking about and not having to go through all of that stuff, you know, beforehand. So thank you, Aubrey, for doing that. Appreciate that. Also, the virtual Memorial Day, that video, that was awesome, and everybody had a hand in that. Jeff, I hope you submit it for some kind of an award. I thought that was really well-done. And again, I'm missing all these activities that we do as a community, but I really appreciate the effort that many of you are expending and trying to keep those celebrations as part of our community, even though we have to do them a little bit differently. So thank you.
And just so you all know, that Memorial Day, those of us that were participating in that, all we were doing was doing what Jeff and Heather Whitty from Parks told us to do. So it came out magnificent, but we all just took direction very well. Thanks, Jeff, for leading that effort. Good job.
I don't have anything. I was going to say great job on the video, too, but I don't have anything.
Nothing. Brent?
I just want to congratulate Lisa Camp also, and then also commend the library for a pretty impressive report on also the way they really adapted throughout this time. Pretty impressive on all those cars through the drive-through and what all they're doing over there to stay busy. I don't think many cities have probably gone that innovative, and it's really impressive. So congratulations to you and your team on all y'all did.
I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, wait.
Sorry, I was commenting on something that somebody said.
I thought you already spoke.
I know. I faked you up. This is our 125th year here in Friendswood, and I got a little note from Joyce Baker. Thanks to Sally for bringing it. To commemorate a few of the dates, just to remind people, because not, these dates don't kind of jump out at you because we don't have something in Friendswood that we've always called Founder's Day like some cities do, and we don't recognize. There are a series of dates. So on February 12, 1895, Frank Brown family came to Galveston County on a train, ended up in Alvin. Somebody told me, how much snow did they get that?
12 inches of snow.
12 inches of snow. So welcome to Friendswood. Welcome to Alvin. They got here in February. With families of TH and AW Lewis, they founded the Friendswood Colony on June 10, 1895. So just nine days from now will be 125 years since they got together and founded the colony. And then sort of, I think the more, the date that we sort of look to a little more is July 16 is when Friendswood was registered with Galveston County, according to the original survey map. So just wanted to give us a little history moment there. Go ahead, John.
I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. Now, closed executive session. Communications from the public regarding executive session topics. Seeing none. Council may convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.074 Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussion and action related thereto in open session evaluations of the city manager and city attorney. So we will reconvene shortly.
I just got...
Okay, reconvene into open session.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the city attorney's contract as written.
Second, the motion.
Okay, all in favor? And I will make the motion that despite Mo's willingness to take a zero pay raise, we're going to give him a 2.75% pay raise. And sorry, Mo, you don't always get what you want.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Great job, both of you.
Great job, Mo. Great job, Mary Kay, both of you. Outstanding.
All right, we adjourn.
We adjourn.